We have returned to open session at six oh four. All attendance will be left in the accelerators to the fact by Justice Pedro Saliz running on the fifth floor.
Justice is available for me to send the pledge?
We just elevated, I'm just waiting.
No problem. It's just a little so that we can see you in the drop down and just prepare this. Nope, yes. Justice, why haven't I muted? You can lead us in the pledge.
Oh, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Harry's done.
All the ten seconds we will have the open session and um we will just act the job position.
Perfect, thank you very much. So this evening we have four different recognitions um to bring forward to the board and I'm actually gonna pass it to Dr. Zamora.
Good evening, board. Tonight, we're excited to recognize four different groups for their accomplishments. Our first group is the Gianno Intermediate School Music Education Program. And we want to make sure we recognize your advisor, Ms. Jennifer Trufillo. Tonight, our students at Gianno are being recognized for with the National 2021 Best Communities for Music Education Award from the NOM Foundation. NOM stands for National Association of Music Merchants. Gianno Intermediate received the National 2021 Best Communities for Music Education Award from the NOM Foundation. They're they are one of only eighty schools nationwide to receive this award and only ten schools in California have selected. It is awarded to districts that demonstrate outstanding achievement in efforts to provide music access and education to all students. So congratulations to the entire music group at Gianno Intermediate School. Let's go ahead.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Yeah, thank you. Um that completely to the Gianno uh music is a powerful tool to pull together. Thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Ochoy and Ms. Trufillo for your accomplishment and your guidance to our students. We very much are very proud of our students and your accomplishment. Thank you. Our next recognition is to Roland High School for esports to the esports teams. So their advisor, Mr. Michael Lee. Their recognition tonight is for reaching finals at the City of STEM LA Tournament and winning the grand finale first place. Roland High School had two teams of students participated in the City of STEM Esports from Los Angeles in Los Angeles from April seventeenth to April twenty fifth against twenty-two teams in LA County. Both of our teams went to the finals and one of them went to win the grand finale. Winning five hundred dollars for our school for our school for their school, Roland High School. Congratulations to the Roland High School Esports Team with the following students being part of this team. Albert Fane, first place. Brandon Wang, first place. John Fan, first place. Aiden Lee, first place. Kevin Wu, first place. Aaron Cook, finalist. Toran Argosino, finalist. Jeremiah Obiakar, finalist. Juan Carlos Garibay, finalist. And Jeremiah De Leon, finalist. Congratulations to the esports team of Roland High School.
In the um this this is the largest of the regional science technology and engineering and math place in Los Angeles for the entire month of April. Congratulations. Good achievement. Thank you.
Yes, congratulations. We're very proud of our students. Another recognition for Roland High School.
Can I ask you to pause for just one minute? We're just having a slight tech issue and I want to support Gina um because we do have our students in the audience trying to elevate them so that our board can see them as well. Um so I just would like to pause for one minute and see if we can support our students. Sorry, Daddy, I know you were on the roll.
Sorry, could you hold just one moment as I elevate now all the students? They now appear on my screen. Hold on just one moment.
Perfect, thank you, Mrs. Warren. So we're going to do the esports team that's gonna be elevated um in Roland High School leadership. If you want to take us back to the previous slide for esports.
And please don't not all students are here, so I'll be elevating those that appear with their name.
Our esports team members have the ability to turn on your camera. I'm sure our board would love to see you in person virtually.
Thank you. We've promoted everyone that's on screen.
Perfect, thank you, Ms. Warren. Do you want to just do a quick recap?
Yes. So we are excited to recognize our students from Roland High School for participating in esports and being part of the grand finale. So our Roland students had two teams participate in the esports team competitions from April seventeenth to April twenty-fifth against twenty-two other teams. Both of our teams went to win the finale the the finals and one of them went to win the grand final uh competition, winning five hundred dollars for their school. So congratulations to the esports team. And here we see all the students that were part of the team on the screen, Albert Fane, Brandon Wang, John Fan, Aiden Lit, Kevin Wu, Toran Argosino, Jeremiah Obiakar, Aaron Fu, Juan Carlos Garibay, and Jeremiah De Leon. Congratulations to you, to your advisor, Mr. Michael Lee, and Mr. Mitch Brunier, your principal. Congratulations to the team.
Congratulations to part of you. Thank you.
Our next recognition is also for Roland High School. Their advisor, Mr. Matt Cole, and the principal, Mr. Mitch Brunier, are part of the acknowledgements. So the recognition is for winning the twentieth place at the Academic Decathlon State Championships. Beginning in June of twenty twenty, Roland High School's academic decathlon team began practicing and studying for this year's thirty-eighth annual academic decathlon competition. At the competition, Roland High School competed against seventy-eight other schools in California. For their hard work and commitment and dedic hard work, commitment and dedication, the team received medals and recognition for their scores. The following students participated and received medals. Ethan Chen, gold medal, highest scoring decathlete at Roland High School. Ethan Chen, bronze medal, science. Angela Yu, bronze medal, SA. Sharlee Fu, bronze medal, SA. Noah Lit, team member. Jossaleh Wey Weyaya, team member. Clayton Ng, team member. Alicia Alicia Kim, team member. Matanya Lit Lit Shet Sungu, team member. Kimberly Tendeno, team member. Congratulations to all of our students. Congratulations to Mr. Cole and Mr. Brunier for your accomplishments. We are very proud of our students.
Thank you. Um Roland High School Academy uh decathlon team have worked so hard to achieve the success. I'm proud of you and I congratulate you for the achievement uh for the team members, the advisors, coaches, and the principal uh for your wonderful accomplishments of your this year's commendations.
Thank you. Our next uh recognition is also for Roland High School additive manufacturing team, 3D printing. Their advisor, Mr. Michael Prostow. Their principal, of course, Mr. Mitch Brunier. The recognition is for the silver uh a accomplishment at the California Skills USA Fifty-fourth State Leadership and Skills Conference. The Skills USA Roland High School chapter members, Michael Abeniate and Amit Ghevery earned silver in the additive manufacturing challenge. 3D printing 3D printing plays a role in nearly every in industry from teaching creativity in education to designing surgical guides and difficult medical procedures to cost savings in manufacturing. 3D printing demands its practitioners are literate in many areas. Constant constants needed to demonstrate their ability to use 3D design for the advantages of additive manufacturing, account for limitations of major 3D printing technologies, advocate for their designs, and use creativity to solve physical problems with real constraints. So congratulations to both our students, Michael Abeniate and Amit Huberie. Congratulations. We're very proud of you. Great job in your accomplishment.
And we have 3D printing to be a future technology for the human vacuum industry. And I I I heard that I've learned the 3D printing will be uh used for manufacturing the uh the spacecrafts upon the moon uh from Earth. So it will be very interesting to learn and graduation for future scientists, future. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Warren.
Thank you.
And uh that's it. So I'm shocked to go set up a conference. Hello, the students, Helen Pan and Nicholas Nicholas Ventura will provide the brief report highlighting what is happening on the scoreboard.
Good evening. Um I'll start with one of our sixth graders. We have Helen Pan. Helen, do you want to unmute yourself and share about Shaolin?
Good evening, board members. I am Helen and I am here to talk about a wonderful school named Shaolin. Shaolin provides many activities such as Chinese classes, robotics, skate, and more. Every student from third grade and up gets the opportunity to learn Chinese taught by Mr. Chow. Every full-time teacher at Shaolin is certified and ninety-five point five percent of the teachers at Shaolin have three or more years of experience. The attendance rate at Shaolin is ninety-seven percent. From personal experience, I can say that every single teacher works their hardest to provide each and every student with the best possible education. Shaolin is and always will be one of the best experiences of my life. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Helen. Um we also have Nicholas Ventura, another sixth grader, here to share his experience at Shaolin.
Good evening, school board members. As you heard, my name is Nicholas George Ventura. I will speak of reasons why I like Shaolin Elementary School. I like that the teachers look over the students' grades and inform the parent or guardian that your child needs help. And the amazing thing is that they wouldn't tell you only at parent-teacher conferences, but on their own time. Before I came to Shaolin, I never got an honor roll because the teachers would only inform my parents at parent-teacher conferences. But it would be too late and that made me stressed and that stress made me feel like I wasn't going to complete my goals and dreams. But that changed at Shaolin. They pushed me to be better. Shaolin gives an after-school for students that need to be challenged harder. But it isn't only for students that need help. It is also for students that want to challenge themselves harder. The employees at Shaolin are kind to the students. Plus, I have never seen a bully pick on a kid at Shaolin. And those are my reasons why I like Shaolin Elementary School. Thank you for listening to my speech and happy good evening.
Thank you, Nicholas. Um I'd also like to take a moment to thank our pledge student today. That was Justice Lopez Saliz, who's also in the sixth grade at Shaolin. Tonight, I wanted to talk a little bit about our in-person support. So um I'm lucky in that I get to be the only principal that uh has a report during our in-person time as we started on April twenty-sixth. At Shaolin, we have approximately a hundred and fifty-three students coming. We found that our youngest learners are the ones who are most eager to come. Our TK and K, we have um over sixty students coming. So our students are there every day with smiles on. It's been amazing to see students say, I got to meet my friends that I've never seen in real life. For our dual students, we see that they are able to practice their target language. So for our students that came in as Mandarin speakers, they're able to practice their English more so than they would at home. And for our English speakers, they're able to practice their Mandarin. And it has been a real joy to see. Our teachers are making sure to make their lessons engaging. And I think Nicholas, you're part of our um our group that comes every you come on Tuesdays and Fridays. And they make sure that it's interactive, that it's not just more of the digital learning. Our teachers have really made an effort to have hands-on opportunities. The majority of the students that signed up for in-person support were students who were at grade level. So they really were challenged to differentiate and make sure that the instruction met the needs of all of our learners um on site. So with that, I'm gonna share screen and show you the kids, because that's why we're here. One second. I'm trying to pull this up. Here we go. Share screen. So as you can see, um they say the eyes are the windows to the soul and I see a lot of very happy eyes in both the teachers and the students and the parents. The opportunity for to have our children back on campus has meant more to our community, our staff, and to me than you guys could imagine. So uh thank you to all who made it possible because it definitely took a village to get us all ready and get us all there.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Helen and Nicholas for your report and presentation. Helen, just in the report, the major.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, board. Um May is Employee Recognition Month. Um we had last week the Teacher Appreciation Week. Yesterday was the Day of the Teacher. Uh May sixteenth to the twenty-second is Classified Appreciation Week. We had Drifted Appreciation Day on May sixth. Um so we are very appreciative and grateful to the outstanding employees in the Roland High School District who work tirelessly each day to serve our students, our family, our staff, and our community. With the onset of the pandemic, our employees have reinvented nearly all of the play-doh to serve our students. Um as you know, March twenty twenty, we changed our full educational program to be in online and emergency setting. As we uh prepared for the opening of the school year, we improved our efforts based on our learning in the spring and we provided a seamless start to this whole year. While there were many competing interests um for our time and our energy, we all remained focused on serving our students and supporting our families. Um to do this during the pandemic, all areas of our operations have shifted and been modified throughout the year as new rules or new regulations or new ideas emerged. Our employees make our organization and I thank our employees for all that each and every one of our employees to to serve our students. Been a a unique year, to say the least. Um and I wish that we could have the opportunity to bring everybody together and celebrate and recognize our employees who appear our site for classifying certificate employees. It's time this week. Yesterday, we put out um a recognition to all of our teachers during Classified Appreciation Week to put out recognition to all of our classified employees. And we also have our district administrator here that followed well. Um we also look forward to recognizing our employees through longevity awards and for those employees that are retiring. There will be a virtual recognition led by Dennis Bixler and our HR team on May the twentieth. I also wanted to share that we're very proud of two recent big awards for our schools. Uh Roland High School was named a two thousand twenty-one California Distinguished School, the state's uh highest award of recognition of educational excellence, and Roland High School received back-to-back awards, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one. And then tonight, we also recognize Gianno Intermediate, one of only eighty schools in the nation um and the only middle school in California to receive the twenty twenty-one um NOM Award for Music. And Dr. Suarez sends them and Jennifer Trufillo and Carlos Ochoa with present seating for our board meeting. The district, I wanted to share that the district will continue with its free monthly mobile food pantry at Beacorda Elementary throughout the summer. So offered on the second Monday of the month, the community is invited on June fourteenth and July twelfth during Tucusie Crush, the produce and food base in the Sushi Foundation. I also want to thank Los Angeles County, who have coordinated effort in Dennis Hahn's office and part of the partner rep. On Friday, November seventh, we were able to offer an early food bank distribution um hosted at Alvarado and Indian School. There are for a thousand community university families that were served. Um so we were proud to be a part of that partnership. Um as you know, and as um Shaolin pointed out, April twenty-sixth, we were excited to welcome our students back to our campuses for in-person support. Um our district was also ready. Um, our district is also ready for a successful summer learning program um in person, and then also opening our twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year on August ninth in person as well. As it comes closer to June, we're getting some graduation season, and we're proud of our class of two thousand twenty-one graduates. Uh, we will be featuring one hundred of our graduates from Roland, Nogales, and Santana High School um with banners hung on white poles across our community um that we serve um at the end of the month. So we have to look out for banners um that will be feature our students' pictures and colleges or the leaders or the military or trade schools that they will be entering upon graduation. Please be held on June second for Santana High School and June third for Roland and Nogales High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. So here's Adam's student report, the representative for what? Um, Nogales High School, uh, class president, Daniel, Presidentino.
Hello to the board. Um, I'm Daniel Vicenteno, as you guys heard. Um, I'm the senior class president at Nogales High School. Um, thank you to the board and the to the superintendent for having me tonight. Uh, right now, um, ASB at Nogales High School is currently working on putting posters and murals together for our senior sunset, which is going to take place on May nineteenth. Uh, last week, we were able to do our senior sunrise. That was a fun experience. We were able to go in our cars in the parking lot with our friends, um, masks on, obviously. And we were able to have uh some donuts and drinks and spend time and just listen to music and see see our class for the first time in a long time. It was a very fun experience. Um, we're also currently putting together a slideshow for the seniors to show at our senior sunset. It's going to be a bunch of photos and memories that we've had throughout our four years at Nogales High School. Um, each student in ASB is also going to present their social issues this week. That should be um a project that we're all looking forward to and working together. And then if I can share the screen. So we see our Nogales page for our senior sunrise. We have a video going on, and we're trying to promote it as much as we can. We're trying to let all the seniors know and the parents know of where it's going to be, the time, the date, and the rules for the activity, as well as our senior sunrise that we had. We posted about it. And we have pictures and just the memories that we made that day. It was a very fun experience. Again, we also promoted it on our Instagram, and we made sure to have the ASB present it through their own social media accounts as well. And that is all I have for you guys tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Thank you for your report. Uh, this is the Roland High School, Joseph Zhang. Roland High School ASP Speaker of the House, provide your report. Joseph.
Uh, good evening, members of the board, uh, Superintendent Dr. Mitchell and members of the audience. My name is Joseph Zhang, and I am the Speaker of the House for Roland High School. Last month, Roland ASP held its elections for the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two executive board. And Anna Yi was elected as the next Speaker of the House. She is here today, and she'd like to give a few words.
Good evening, oh, sorry. Good evening, everyone. My name is Anna Yi, and I'm going to present Roland High School next year and be the ASP Speaker of the House. I'm very excited to be able to give you guys monthly report for the next school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Um, I'd like to congratulate uh various groups on campus for uh for their achievements, uh, some of which were recognized earlier on the meeting. Our esports team advanced to the winner's bracket in the City of STEM uh esports tournament uh and won the grand finals. Uh, our academic decathlon placed twentieth in their competition, and our three D printing team won silver at Skills USA competition. But I'd also like to recognize our photo department for producing a photo brochure, our art students for hosting their very own art show, and our boys and girls varsity soccer teams for advancing to the first round of CIF. CIF, yeah. Now for the events at Roland High School. Because we were not able to host homecoming events last fall, a royalty court was designed to combine both the homecoming and prom court activities. A video was shown every Wednesday in April in the homeroom classes that highlighted the court revealings, court dances, and court winners. On April twenty-seventh, the senior class hosted the very first in-person event, which was a drive-through the decades event. This was a dual event combining a drive-in movie with the coronation of the royalty court for the senior class. The following day, uh, Wednesday, April twenty-eighth, a video was released to the homeroom classes showcasing the entire uh process. The senior class would like to thank Mark, the uh Lobos, for getting the huge screen donated and working the event for us. Moving on, Teachers Appreciation Week was the first week of May. Every every day of the week, ASB students completed an activity which ranged from writing virtual poems uh to gifting small gifts like hand sanitizer and Reese's candies to show our appreciation for the staff. Yesterday was National School Nurse Day, and students gifted our school nurse with a jar of notes and a personalized flyer to thank her for helping us out with our weekly COVID testings. Next week, uh, ASB students will continue to recognize the staff by decorating the teacher break rooms during the week of the employee, which will be from May seventeenth to the twenty-first. Athletics has continued to go full steam with uh soccer, basketball, swimming, track, maimington, wrestling, softball, and baseball, fin- finishing out their seasons and this whole year. Seniors received good news uh that they'd be having an in-person graduation and a senior week that will fall on the last week of May. For the senior week, Monday will be Senior Field Day, which will include various sporting activities. Tuesday will be a paint night and a revealing for Mr. Twenty Twenty-One. Thursday's event will be a scavenger hunt using the new parts of our campus. And finally, a senior sunset will fall on Friday, May twenty-eighth, which will also be the final day where students or seniors have to attend online class. In hindsight, it was impossible for Roland ASP to give uh the students and especially the seniors the year that they wanted, given, you know, COVID and the guidelines. But I like I like to think that Roland ASP remained resilient and innovative and really embodied the greater goals and provided seniors with a year that they will cherish and never forget. Every month, I re- I've reiterated the fact that Roland students strive to be better thinkers, communicators, and contributors. And every month, Roland High School students uh do deliver, and they have never failed to impress us. Thank you to the board for supporting Roland ASP this past this past school year, and I do hope you will continue to support Roland ASP in the next. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. Uh, thank you for reporting to the board, and you have done a great job. And welcome, Anna Yi, and we're looking to see you. So next is Santana High School. We receive a report from Santana High School ASP Representative, Mel Garcia.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Mitchell. My name is Mel Garcia, and I'm here to share news with you from Santana High School. The month of May has been a busy one for Santana students, especially our seniors who are working diligently to finish their classes and recover credits for graduation this June. We are excited to be graduating in person at Nogales High School. After what everyone has gone through this past year with the pandemic, we're looking toward walking and receiving our diplomas on June second. Students and teachers have settled into a good routine during our Tuesday and Thursday afternoon in-person classes. Teachers have said they are happy with the work that their students are doing in class while on campus, and the transition back has been a positive um effect for everyone. Universal Studios has opened up their park to Santana seniors and other seniors who would like to celebrate their grad night with their families. Students can buy tickets through a special grad night portal that Universal Studios has has set up. And ASB is doing all we can to get the word out about this fun opportunity that Universal Studios has given to our students. ASB has worked hard to put together fundraisers this year. We sold many masks, shirts, and hoodies, and were able to gain a profit from our fundraisers. With this money and some help from Santana, we're buying T-shirts for all Santana seniors to help them remember this crazy year. We are grateful for ASB and this opportunity to learn service even in this time of a pandemic and virtual learning. Before I leave you, I have some quotes from ASB students who have a few things that they would like to say about Santana. Jasmine says, "Thank you for helping me focus more and helping me stay motivated so I could graduate." Hector says, "Thank you, Santana, for giving me a second chance that I probably would not have had otherwise." Stephanie says, "Thank you, Santana teachers. You're the best. You all care about us and our education." We at Santana would like to thank you, board members, Dr. Mitchell, and the cabinet for the help you have given us this year. It has been a crazy year, and yet we got through it together. ASB would like to wish you good health, as well as we all venture out of our homes now. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Mel. Thank you for your report. So there's a staff report. We will receive an overview on current and pending facility targets. We're going to, Dr. Mitchell.
Perfect. I'm going to grab Alex's mask, because his just broke. All right. So we have a facilities report uh that we will provide. Um, that Alex Ford will provide. Just to give a bit of update on the items that our uh district staff is working on um, what's in relation to our bond projects. We're just going to provide a brief uh bit of information to make sure that the board has the information that they need.
Good evening, Board President Chan, Board President Dan, President and Board. Thank you for allowing me to make tonight's presentation. This is one of my favorite presentations that I made. If this provides an opportunity to share with the public the commitment that the board and Dr. Mitchell have to provide state-of-the-art facilities for our students. In this presentation, I will highlight three topics. A few projects in the two thousand twelve Measure On, Measure R, Bond, energy infrastructure modernization, and some future projects. Most of all the items covered today could have not happened or will not happen without the support of the board, Dr. Mitchell, and the work of Marcos Rodriguez. I want to take this time to thank Marcos publicly for all the work he has done over the years to have a successful facilities program. We see the final product, but the countless hours and energy is done behind the scenes to have a successful build. Thank you, Marcos. Unfortunately, Marcos is under the weather tonight and is joining us remotely. Measure R two thousand twelve bond program. In two thousand twelve, the community approved Measure R two thousand twelve bond. This provided the district with a hundred and fifty-eight million dollars to improve the facilities for our students and staff. Our bond program has an oversight committee to reassure the community that the bond funds are being used as taxpayers voting. Members volunteer for this non-paid committee, serving two-year terms. On behalf of Dr. Mitchell and the district, I would like to thank these members for their dedication to the community, students, and staff of the Roland Unified School District. One major project of the two thousand twelve bond was recently completed at Roland High School. The Roland High School addition project is a closed and certified project in the division of the state architecture. This was a four-phase project where five new buildings were constructed, providing a hundred and fourteen thousand square feet of building space. A twenty-two classroom building was built. This is the inside of the state-of-the-art district's performing arts center. To the left is a picture of the new administration and library building, and to the right, the multipurpose room, AKA for the students at Roland High School, the hideout. Left picture highlights the entrance to the administration building, and right shows the lounge of the new library. When you complete a major modernization on a portion of the campus, it is important to blend in the existing campus. We blended the campus by installing new shade structures in the quad, painting trim and lockers, and the final piece to be completed for the blended project is install is the installation of new classroom doors throughout the whole campus. This shows the before picture of the quad without strait structures and the old blue trim in exterior buildings. The next two slides show the new strait structures in the quad. All lockers have been freshened up with a new coat of dark blue paint. Before, we had different shades throughout the campus. This highlights the new trim, new tan trim found throughout the campus. I want to thank our two district painters and several bus drivers that completed this painting project during the pandemic school closure. At this time, I would like to share about another project, another two thousand twelve project we're currently working on, Oswald Academy New Campus Project. This fifty-million-dollar project is five phases that will replace all buildings with the exception of the secondary building that was completed in two thousand thirteen. Eight thousand square feet of new building will be created, thirty-three D classrooms, a band and choir room, a multipurpose room, library, locker rooms, kitchen, and new playfield. The timeline for this project is based on each phase completed at the inclusion of the academic year. The fourth phase will be completed by December twenty twenty-three. The classrooms will be built before the twenty-two, twenty-three school year begins. Administration and building, multipurpose building will be completed in December of twenty twenty-three. Phase one is a part of the project in all modernizations that people never see, the infrastructure and underground utilities. Phase two included demo, site prep, and construction of the west classroom building. Twelve portables were demolished, and the site pad was built. Foundation and slabs were the next portion in phase two. Once foundation was poured and cured, steel structures were erected. Interior rooms were framed and drywalled. The building is completely weather-wrapped, and stucco work will begin tomorrow. After the completion of the west building, the same process will begin with the third phase, the east building. I would like to share, at this time, we are slightly delayed on the timeframe of the first phase. Due to the pandemic, our contractor has experienced some key product and material delays. Also, our projects use prevailing wage. Also, our projects use prevailing wage trade employees that our local trade laws apply. Recently, we've also experienced a shortage of trade people available to work. Again, although we're slightly delayed, I am cautiously optimistic that we can regain just one to two weeks in the upcoming in the upcoming months with this project and I'm aggressively working with the contractor. Locals High School Revival Project was completed in two thousand sixteen. This four-building project centered on two, two-story classrooms and administration buildings, multipurpose room, and a new kitchen. Also, the fourth one was reconfigured and constructed. Originally, Locals had three remaining phases to be completed. The second phase would replace the band and choir room, the third phase would replace the classroom building, classroom buildings, and with the fourth phase, replacing the pool and locker rooms. As shared in the previous facility study session, we recommended combining all three remaining projects into one. We found that we were landlocked near the band and choir room building and the proposed plans would not meet the needs of our students. By incorporating the pool and locker room and band choir building, the entire area can be used to build functional buildings that fully meet the needs of our students and staff. Also, the twelve replacement classroom building will be reviewed to determine the need for this building. Based on our facilities master plan, we currently have an excess of classrooms in the developed facilities. This area can be used for other purposes to meet students' and staff interest. By combining these projects, we will reduce, we will reduce soft costs with one submission to DSA and special testings and inspectors. Also, the project will be completed sooner, avoiding construction cost escalation. And finally, and most important, our students and staff will be able to utilize the completed campus sooner. Our next steps. Tonight, we have on the agenda an item to request for qualification for proposal architect services. We plan to bring a recommendation in August and September. Once the architect has been approved by the board, we will work with students, staff, and community to develop design concepts. These design concepts will be shared with the board before actual building plans are developed. Final plans will be shared with the board before submitted to DSA. Throughout the entire process of designing and planning, all stakeholders will be included in community phase. At this time, I would like to share a non-Measure R Bond project, the energy infrastructure modernization. The goal of this program is to improve the learning environment, replace aging infrastructure, and reduce energy and maintenance costs. This work began in two thousand seventeen with a competitive RFP process to secure an outside partner to secure three-point-six billion dollars in Prop thirty-nine funding. As required by the grant, utility, uh utility analysis and detailed site assessment were completed. Based on this information, an energy master plan was created. Grant funds were secured and work began based on the funds available per phase. Four phases have been approved and tonight, a fifth phase is being recommended to the board in an agenda item. This spreadsheet details the energy master plan that guides our work. Phase one focused on replacing new and approved LED lighting and central HVAC modernizations. Phase two and three continue the LED lighting and HVAC replacements, highlighted with the gym and NPR air conditioning installed throughout the campus, throughout the district. Phase four focused on improving air quality with new HVAC units capable of utilizing Merv thirteen filters. Phase five will complete our HVAC replacement of the remaining hundred and eighty-six units and provide type of filters that are rated at Merv seventeen in all classrooms throughout the district. In addition to the improved learning environment, this program has saved the district one-point-eight million dollars to date. At this time, I would like to highlight a few, few other major projects that we have in store. I would like to first share about high school turf and track replacement. In two thousand seven, both Locals and Royal High School turf and track was replaced. Typically, these products last a maximum of ten years. We have been able to utilize these facilities for fourteen. In order to maximize the light, five years ago, we developed a reconditioning and service program to extend the light as much as possible. At this time, we are recommending replacing the turf and track at both of our campuses, high school campuses. Although this project is li- is listed as one of our two thousand twelve Measure R Bond projects, we intend to use district funds. This will allow us to use the set aside three million dollars of bond funds on other building needs for our students and community. These are original photos of the underground drainage system for the synthetic turf at Locals High School. I share these pictures because this underground drainage system will not be replaced as it has a fifty-to-seventy-year service life, significantly reducing the replacement cost, which is estimated to eight-hundred-thousand to one-million dollars per per campus. Tonight, a board item to use a California multiple award schedule is on the agenda for approval. This allows public agencies like us to use a group of pre-qualified suppliers that the state has created to solicit competitive offers. If approved, we will review plans with site and confirm possible construction period and non-use of the stadium. We hope to bring a recommendation to the May twenty-seventh board meeting to allow construction to begin the day after graduation or near after. I apologize for the compressed timeframe, but during the pandemic, athletic competitions were delayed. And fortunately, a compressed seasons were made available for our students. Where we saw eight-hundred-to-a-thousand student athletes participate in athletics during this time. These seasons will go into late May and provide an opportunity to do work this summer, not impacting our students as they take a much-needed break from the late season. The district, from the direction of the board and Dr. Mitchell, had explored the use of solar shade structures at our site, at our sites. Cost analysis and array structures until recent did not pencil out for long-term investments. With recent rate changes and the opportunity to use federal funds for outdoor learning eating areas, the district plans to aggressively review these opportunities to provide additional learning eating areas for our students and staff and provide an ongoing energy savings for the general fund. This illustrates an outdoor learning, solar learning and eating shade structure. As you can see, the structure has multiple posts. Previously, examples shared with the board had one post, which are no longer accepted and approved by DSA. I'd like to share some additional projects. At Royal High School, oh excuse me, at Royal Elementary, we demolished two unusable kindergarten classrooms that will be replaced in the future closer to the existing kindergarten. Our plan is to create a new playground and increase the parking lot. We are in discussions with California Edison to remove power poles in the parking lot. We will move forward once we have confirmation from the county and and Edison that the poles can be removed. We are aggressively working with the Edison to pay for the removal of the cost or a significant portion of the cost. At Hollingworth, we are currently working with a special ed department to meet the needs of our preschool program. We are exploring building a bathroom, building that can be used for our preschool students. The bathroom would be designed to meet the specific needs with the program at Hollingworth. We would like to fast-track this project and bring an architect contract for approval in the very near future. By fast-tracking this project, we could possibly have a new building by January twenty twenty-two. We are working with a few schools to increase um electronic marquee and install then this summer. And under the direction of the board and Dr. Mitchell, as supported by ed services and human resources, with the fine and work of our staff and our students, Royal Unified School District has been recognized with several awards. We are currently working on placing the signs associated at each site that's received an award. Like in California Year School that Dr. Mitchell just mentioned, California By Literacy, and Schools to Watch as examples. Again, I want to thank the board, Dr. Mitchell, for the continued support of having the best facilities possible for our students, staff, and community. Also, thank you to the community for supporting Measure R Bond. Without the three bonds that the community passed, the excellent state of our current facilities would not be the same. Any questions?
Um I'm so happy to see Hollingworth Elementary, the special uh preschool bathroom building. Uh I think was, uh, this is Flores, community member?
Yes.
That spoke a couple of months ago. And the need is definitely there, but we just gotta make sure that the bathroom, I mean, a large event table, changing room, though. And needs a diaper change, but it also privacy within the building.
We're looking at creating a bathroom with three sections. One with age-appropriate toilets for for our preschool students. A second section with a changing table that would allow for what you were just referring to. And a third for staff members. So we're looking to really meet the needs. Uh Dr. Sri Lohkar met with staff there as well and has spoken to staff members about um the need for additional um bathrooms there.
Right. I I think it's the um, am I missing, um, Magalas, um, something, what was you explaining for? Is that a plan through the society line is that?
Yes, that that would be also completed with, or the pool and the locker rooms, uh classroom places and the band and choir rooms.
Yes. Leechers or?
There'd be a pool, um, a pool compound.
Okay.
That would contain um some leechers so the spectators could view uh the choir program.
It's a big need to have.
It's also a big need for our community as well, as we provide the summer programs or our recreation programs as well uh for students to uh get cooled off in the in the hot summers.
Thank you. Beautiful, thank you.
Thank you.
Eric. Thank you. So first thing I want to say, Mr. Flores, I appreciate you, your projects are always on task and move forward. You're a great job manager. And so it is really incredible. The upgrades to the school is fabulous. Uh it makes our team proud, our community proud. Um and it's the stuff that's visible, uh, terribly. I appreciate that. You took the slide, uh, the savings for porn slide. You highlighted, don't you tested? You highlighted it and you just kind of glossed over, but I I really want to point this out. Because of your hard work and things that you've done to move forward, you have a total savings of one-point-eight million dollars in electricity costs that we would be avoiding, basically. We would have paid this money out if we hadn't done these everything. That's, that's something that we put that amount of pocket that we didn't have to spend it. So that's a huge win. That's great moving forward. Uh if we look at the months of August and September, uh then our highest rates for using electricity, most likely because of um air conditioning. So as we go into uh phase four and five, I'm gonna ask that we look at high-efficiency air conditioning, like you were, and maybe if we have to spend more upfront, this is where we get our savings. This is in costs that we don't see. When we see the money as a community that we see, that it's savings that we get in our pockets. Um and then the other thing on here, April is the lowest month. That's our baseline. Excuse me, your additional work to include lighting and everything else will will bring that dollar down. So you'll have continued savings moving forward. So you you glossed over this stage, the other ones are pretty, and you can see it. This is, this is good stuff here. I do want to share that. Um one other comment here, the outdoor learning structure, and this is just from the experience, and this is all data that I have. Um there was a humming noise or a white noise that would go along with some of the old um solar panels. So I would just be careful and with that, if we can just look in to see if that, and it may not, I mean, if so many kids are, it may not. You're not quite know either concern, um but at some point, it sounds good on paper. We put it in, we save a bunch of money, and we get it there, and and it's like, I'm not sitting here. So just something from from my background and all, just want to share. Just to keep that in mind, it may not be initially longer. It was a few years.
Well, thank you for for, for you shared. I just wanted to share that I'm presenting, but as a team of all the employees here and cabinet that were together to to make these improvements for our students and for our staff and for our community. Um I did highlight in the um, in a slide that previously we we shared single-post shady structures. There have been advancements um with shade structures, and there's actually been some some issues with the shade structures in Northern California where there's snow, where there have been some collapses of them. That's the reason why they're no longer accepted to have uh multiple posts. And the sound issue as well, there's been advancements also with um with the the panels as well to avoid that. That's something we definitely would would review it to make sure that we have something that's, first, most of our stake for our students and for our staff, and will provide the uh the cost savings for the district.
Okay, right, thank you very much. Are we able to store the energy?
There is an option to be able to use batteries um to store them. That's something that uh with my analysis, working with different uh consultants, would be something that I would definitely would want to consider to be able to sell that back at the peak hours um to the public agencies. But there is an opportunity for us to do this, with purchasing batteries.
Okay. I was, I was just reading today that construction costs have gone up, a lumber alone. I think hundred fifty percent.
Yes.
Um when they did on these projects, and they're over multiple years, are they allowed to put change orders in because of the increased cost of materials or do they have to stick with their original deal?
Uh, these are public contracts and yes, they are able to submit um a, they're able to submit an invoice for increased cost. Uh so what we do is to make sure that we avoid those, uh for example HVACs. HVACs um systems were in high demand during this, during the pandemic. So there was a price, price increase, and we expect and analyze that there will be greater increases in this rate as well. So we went ahead and purchased all the HVACs for the entire product upfront now, so that we can go and have them. And number two, we'll create a reduced cost or the actual cost at the statistic. So there are different things that we're doing. Steel, for example, also. All the steel for the the next two buildings have already been purchased and we're storing it as well. It was not for the savings, but actually for the time. We wanted to make sure we had it so that we would straighten to the second grade immediately, having the delays. But in reality, the plan that we did is gonna help us in this, in cost as well. Um if there would be any type of submittal uh for additional optimization, it would be aggressively reviewed and um and discussed um to uh to not make that happen.
Alex, thank you very much for your great report. You and your team outstanding. We have so many wonderful projects from the past, present, and future. Wonderful. It's so nice to look at. Um I'm really happy that we're gonna do the Hollingworth building, make sure you new preschool bathroom building because that's very necessary. That's really good. I'm very excited about solar, so thank you. I know two years ago we brought it to the board, and so I'm glad that we're gonna continue that. Thank you. That's my reward. You are wonderful. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. Thank you so much for your job well done. The presentation is wonderful. Um uh also, I'd just like to make a comment regarding Magalas High School. This is really needed. Uh and I think the community is waiting for this to happen. So I'm, I'm just elated with this.
We're, we're looking forward to. We're, we're looking forward to have plans created next year, and we're completing the construction at Oswald to be able to immediately begin construction and the Miguel's when we complete construction in the in in Oswald, as we've done in the past, so that we don't overextend ourselves, and we make sure that we provide a a good product.
So the starting piece and the building plan for the Oswald, you said after graduation or?
For the the turf program, for the turf replacement, we would like to start it as soon as the day after graduation, um, so that we can go ahead and complete it during graduation, we can meet the first, uh, football game, um, and band performance, because it's not just football. There's band needing perform, and there's cheerleaders at the sidelines, and it's, uh, it's an entire, it's entire, um, school event.
Yeah, the community is really waiting for these, um, especially the band required.
That will be designed all next year with with submittals at the end of next year, hopefully construction beginning the following, in twenty two, twenty three school year.
Hold on, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any more questions? I just have a question on the side. Phase five, the, uh, uh, the purifier, the portable air purifier.
Yes.
Merv seventeen, and then the, the non-portable one, what are you thought of as the, uh, meant perfectly? What given thirteen and seventeen, which one is is the can filter the, uh, which one's better?
The higher the number, the higher the grade, uh, that purifies more the air. So the actual air scrubbers, the HEPA filters that we have that are Merv seventeen are higher grade and provide a more, um, more air quality. Uh, originally, we were, we were, we were replacing, we're replacing air scrubber in each classroom that had a Merv eleven, because guidance shared that a Merv thirteen was sufficient. But working with the association and and different meetings that we've had and discussing, we felt it was best to put the, put the Merv seventeen in all of our classrooms, so that there's equity of all the classrooms, and also other workspaces too. I don't want you to think that this is just a classroom, there's also other workspaces as well, um, because we have other staff members that are working in other workspaces above.
So what what is the education of the portable one, did it move anywhere, so what why, um?
In some of our buildings, we had Merv eleven filtered HVAC systems. And and the guidance called for a Merv thirteen minimum. So for those classrooms, we 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 secured an air scrubber HEPA filter that would provide the HEPA, the Merv rating that was, that was a thirteen or greater. We just decided after school reopening, and just this Monday, we we placed air scrubbers in all classrooms throughout the entire district.
So the portable filter filtering the inside air.
Yes.
And then telling everyone's, it's clearing the the outside air going into the, the natural. So, so would that make a difference, the Merv seventeen one and portable one only circulating and and it's putting into the inside air? Right, so.
It is fol- it's absolutely correct, it, the the HEPA, the HEPA filter is focusing on the inside air of the classroom, while the HVAC system has been bringing in natural air going to the filtering system and being either heated up or cooled off and providing it to the, uh, uh, to the classroom, although air ta- air take is taken out as well and is cycled in as well, so there is, um, there's only a certain percentage of natural air that is that is put in. And the upgrades that we have done with CO two readers allows us to be able to see them to maximize that as well.
Ellis?
I just would like to thank the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee for being with us and and doing this for us. It's a, it's a, it's a big job. Um, I saw the term for landing zone and.
Yes.
Ellis Jackman, thank you so much. Is is the term finished by this month and next month, so is there a replacement?
Yes, we've been ad- we are advertising aggressively, um, in different, in different, um, website, Twitter, uh, for people interested in being part of the oversight committee. We look forward to bringing to you the next working and recommendation for the placement that we have. We have one, one of our members that is turned out as well. Um, you, this, the term is two years, but they can serve three terms. So this one member has, one, one of those has has turned out. The other member is considering, um, doing a second term. And so that's, at this time, we plan to bring in one, um, new member to the board for consideration.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you for your presentation.
Of the, uh, comments, any?
Yes, sir.
Oh yeah, I mean, uh, you know, the fish, of fish notes, the public is welcome to provide comment to the board. We branch our dividend to three minutes, as well as ten to four hundred minutes, by vote of the board, a maximum of twenty minutes. Unless, ten to five of words, it's our citizens, for each of the deputies that now asked open in regulation and the regulation, what must operate in the night, allow for members in comment on non-agenda items or information you may think of that are not on agenda. Additionally, no action can be taken, however, the board may give an erection to that following the comment.
Yes, hello, uh, good evening, board, we have one, uh, person tonight, it is Ms. Amy Urbian.
Good evening, President Chen, School Board, Dr. Mitchell and Cabinet. Yesterday, we celebrated California Day of the Teachers and School Nurses Day. I want to thank all our educators and nurses for giving their all as they have every day, especially this school year. I've heard stories across our district on the enrichment activities and academic help our students are receiving during the in-person support afternoons. Kindergartners have been able to do projects that sometimes they couldn't do during virtual learning. Culinary arts students have been able to cook and bake with their time, and though and through it, all our members were happy to see their students in person. As we begin to slowly welcome back our students, there's much, there's been much discussion during the school year on the social emotional health of our students and have taken place at these board meetings. The purpose of bringing students back to school is to provide academic support, but also for students to interact and improve their social emotional health. This pandemic has created trauma that will have long-term effects on our students, staff, and families. Tonight on the board agenda is a contract for outreach concern, which is company that will be providing counseling services to our K through six students for this upcoming school year. Interns will be assigned to our ele- elementary sites. Is this really the best way to address the needs of our students for the years to come? Even before the pandemic, there's been a need to have elementary school counselors, and with this pandemic, the need is even greater. The right thing to do is invest in elementary counselors who will be part of the school community and roll in employees. Counselors will be able to create relationships with students as long as they are part of the school staff. Students and families will be able to trust the counselor, and it's always better to recognize a familiar face over time and not different interns from year to year who don't have a commitment to our community. This school board has advocated, want to provide the resources to address the social, emotional, and mental health of our students, then invest in hiring permanent rolling unified elementary counselors. Thank you.
For speakers? Okay, with the next item? Yes, we'll hold a public hearing on the rolling unified school district's better education local plan area, SALP, local plan, including the annual budget plan and service plan for the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two school year. Members of the public wishing to provide comments on the SALP local plan, when you so, by raising your virtual hand. The public hearing is open at seven twenty four.
As time, if there's any members of the public who are, um, observing our meeting would like to speak on the public hearing for our secret district SALP plan, please raise your virtual hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chen.
Okay, so the public hearing is closed at seven twenty five P M. The next, uh, seven eight, special education local plan area SALP, local plan including the annual budget and the service plan. Ever motion, and then a second to approve. Twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, SALP local plan, including the annual budget and the service plan, in the motion.
Alex.
Alex.
I second.
Ellis second, any discussion? With the local vote, Adam Freeman.
I.
Ellis Gonzalez.
I.
David Melkin.
I.
Eric Manegas.
I.
Perish and I, motion carry. The next items will be personnel commission budget, this two year twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. Then a motion and a second to receive, and concrete with the proposed twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two personnel commission budget. Our motion. This will be in the latest motion. Do my thing.
I'll second.
Ellis second, any wishes?
Yeah, there is another couple of questions, um, first one is, uh, for the, um, salaries. I noticed, uh, the directors is going down, is that correct?
I just replied another budget, there was in a previous budget, I believe there was a one-time compensation, and that that is the difference. So the the individual salary is not being decreased, uh, but there, but within the budget was after a settlement, and not a settlement, but a negotiation piece, um, which provided for a one-time increase.
And the other thing on there, uh, uh, equipment, there's nothing blank, is that enough to be blank?
I I believe that that was intentional, I know that Alex and his staff reviewed it, I know Dennis and his staff have reviewed it as well.
So in terms of the personnel commission, we can go to resources office, we've been outfitted with, uh, some new equipment, and, uh, based on Joan's recommendation, that is recommendation from personnel director.
And my reason I'm bringing that up is that when I was on the commission, things would be purchased af- request would come in, purchase of equipment after the fail, rather than planning ahead and cycle out at the same age.
And even, I believe in the previous budgets, when we did a free for every place.
And if I can share, there's also flexibility, several times throughout the year, uh, the personnel commission can also transfer funds of within funds to if their purchase needs to be. Um, in previous years, they've not always utilized the legal, uh, allocation that they have. And sometimes they they transfer some of those funds for some purchases that they need. And last year, there was additional funds provided to the personnel commission of about five thousand dollars, and new computers will purchase for the place.
Last question is, uh, we had spoken in the past, uh, many times about doing classification studies, is that basically not on a general, it's important?
Um, that it, that does continue, that is a continued interest, um, and I have had conversations with the, um, personnel commission director, as well as the chair of the personnel commission. Um, it it's not the timing that we are in right now, uh, our work does not look the same, we're not being appropriate time to do, uh, job study, classification study, compensation review. But, um, we have, I know Dennis has also been working, um, with setting out that timeline as to what he has.
That's all right.
Thank you. Any more questions? We're ready for, yeah, uh, local votes. Adam Freeman.
I.
Ellis Gonzalez.
I.
David Melkin.
I.
Eric Manegas.
I.
Perish and I, motion carry. The next item, seven C, contract agreement between the rolling unified school district and California Department of Public Health, Valencia branch, average rate, for a COVID nineteen testing. That motion, and as a second to approve, the contract agreement between the rolling unified school district and California Department of Health, public health, Valencia branch, average rate, for COVID nineteen test.
Alex.
Done a move. Alex, okay. Manegas second, any questions?
And someone question, um. It says not exceed a hundred eighty nine thousand for general funds, like care, care funds would be used for this?
They were, but it allows the general funds that it's, sort of, you wanna address the budgeting piece?
Yes, we could use care funds for that, and general funds are are care funds as well.
Any other questions? Local vote, Adam Freeman.
I.
Ellis Gonzalez.
I.
David Melkin.
I.
Eric Manegas.
I.
Perish and I, motion carry. The next item, seven B, contract agreement between the rolling unified school district, school district and the childcare career LLC, EBA, education team. This motion and a second to approve the contract agreement.
Alex.
Done a move. I'll second, David second, any questions?
Would be possible to have the staff explain this more.
Yes, certainly, would you like to explain this?
Sure, good. So, uh, for the board, we know that we are going to be facing a substitute shortage. Throughout California, school districts are facing substitute shortages. So we've been looking at resources that may be able to assist us in meeting these needs, especially pertaining to day-to-day substitutes. And there's been a few agencies that have come under our radar that have been able to be successful in helping schools meet those day-to-day substitute needs. So this is basically preventative, analogy would be temp agency. You know, we're all familiar with the old-fashioned temp agency, when we needed somebody clerical for a day or two or a week, or, you know, um, you know, the the accounting agencies we've heard advertised, those kinds of things. This is that for substitutes. In the event that our substitute pool is not sufficient to meet our needs, that's really basically what we're looking for. Is just to augment our current pool. We have been recruiting, we recruit constantly, um, but the number of applications we've seen come in for substitutes this year has been much less than what we've had in the past. We're not the only district facing this, everyone around us is facing the same. In fact, Dr. Kevin Despard, our Director of H R, he's got a placeholder on his weekly agenda. He interviews every applicant that applies, every single one. And through that process, those who meet our qualifications, about fifty percent of them continue on to be processed. Fifty percent don't, and when we reach out to those who don't, generally speaking, what we find out is that they they've either obtained a long-term position somewhere else, and we're looking just to augment those other positions, but we know that we're gonna have a shortage. So this is proactive measure on our part to to make sure that we have this going forward.
Thanks again much.
Any more questions? Yeah, so the, uh, local vote, Adam Freeman.
I.
Ellis Gonzalez.
I.
David Melkin.
I.
Eric Manegas.
I.
Perish and I, motion carries. The next items, seven B, contract between rolling unified school district and the childcare LLC. That motion, and a second to approve the contract.
Alex.
Done a move.
I'll second.
Ellis second, any questions? Local vote, Adam Freeman.
I.
Ellis Gonzalez.
I.
David Malcolm?
Aye.
Eric Manegas?
Aye.
Erician I motion carries. The next item is seven F, memorandum of understanding between the rolling unified school district. And the Association of United Educators related to health and safety in person support of student. New motion and then a second, read by the memorandum of understanding between rolling unified school district and A R E.
I'll move.
And this?
I'll second.
Mr. Manegas second, any discussion? The local vote? Tom Freeman?
Aye.
And this Gonzalez?
Aye.
David Malcolm?
Aye.
Eric Manegas?
Aye.
Erician I motion carries. Seven G, memorandum of understanding between the rolling unified school district and Association of United Educators related. To in-person support for students, this is motion and then a second, read by the memorandum of understanding between R U S D and A R E.
I'll move.
Done a move. I'll second. David second, any questions? Local vote? Tom Freeman?
Aye.
And this Gonzalez?
Aye.
David Malcolm?
Aye.
Eric Manegas?
Aye.
Erician I motion carries. The next item seven H, review and discussion of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. For meeting schedule and date in a motion and then a second to review and discuss. Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two for meeting dates that were approved by the Board of Member, April eighth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll move.
Done a move.
I'll second.
And this second? So we have. Okay, done it.
Um, the reason that I wanted to bring back the calendar was that Agnes had a great idea. And she was thinking about having the study session on the same day as our board meeting. And, um, I was thinking maybe we could do it earlier, that's only if the board members come in at two thirty. Instead of having a meeting twice, uh, um, it would be once, and we're only talking about four days. Um, and it would be once a month, only board members could come at two thirty, maybe the study session should be two thirty to four thirty. They would start a regular board meeting at four thirty, like we usually do, close session, then six o'clock, a regular board meeting. The reason for this, not only just one, um, month a month, but staff doesn't have to stay so long on that day, they already work very hard. Easier for everyone once a month. And I think maybe more people are aware of our board meetings, that our study sessions for the community might listen to the study sessions on board meeting days. Rather than if they are now on a separate study session day. And those dates are November fourth, February twenty-four, March twenty-four, and April twenty-eighth. So I'd just like to go with the board guilt about that.
To be honest, I work full-time, and so I already struggle to come here at four thirty, and sometimes I struggle to have a conflict, so, uh, moving it up early in the day would be would be, um, difficult.
Okay.
Uh, and even today, I struggle a little bit because you're on time, so, um, it it might cause, uh, I'm concerned.
No problem, so these are for four thirty for twice. Then.
It it is, and I understand, because I'd like to relax a little bit, but it becomes, uh, moving it earlier in the day is.
Okay. No, I understand. I totally understand, that was the only, that was my number one thing. And the other thing I wanted to ask is, we also have three study sessions, um, scheduled for eight thirty to two thirty. One is on Thursday, two on Friday. And, um, I was wondering if those are January fourteenth and May twentieth, if we could switch them to a Thursday instead of a Friday.
I just want to make a statement, um, while previous, um, comment, there I can say. You know, our board meetings are really our, our meeting of the board and with the public and the public. And I know that sometimes we don't have a whole lot of people watching us, like I think there's eleven up there today. But, um, it it kind of closes the door for those that work to monitor or to attend our study sessions, which are open to the public. Um, most of those people that do work wouldn't be able to, um, and or watch them depending on if they're still doing them virtually or not. So it kind of closes the door for public, um, participation by having a two thirty. So I would prefer to keep it at four thirty and, um, have the study sessions at that time. Plus, I'm too old to sit here for some hours.
And so what do you guys think about, um, switching maybe each of Thursday instead of Fridays? I know David had a comment about that before.
It was a long time ago, yeah, Lynn Lynn, um, Heather Kent, when she was on the board, she and I were members of the senior pathfinder groups. And, um, we meet on Friday mornings. But, I mean, it's not that hard for me not to get away from that meeting. I'd say whichever best for the staff presenting, whether Friday morning or Friday, Thursday is better for them. I I defer to the staff presenting, it's not so bad.
Yeah, I can handle that, either day it's like a, I have to take a bit of work to attend, but either day it does not matter.
Just raise up the weekend for our new staff.
Okay.
What do you think, I have people feel?
I will think of the people. People.
I. What do you think? Well, whatever suits, um, majority of the board. Um, as I knew, I was just questioning, um, on a conversation. I need to know whether some other school district have done the same, and, uh, Dr. Mitchell, I had a conversation with her, she had explained to me that. It is done by other school district, and at that point in the timeline, let's be the answer. So whatever suits the majority is fine, and I just thought I'd bring it up to see what other board members think about it. And thank you for your, 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 the way David said, um, from a show, when it comes down to the matter of Thursday or Friday.
Uh, I don't believe it, it, I mean, I I keep the dates, I don't believe, we're here, Monday to Friday, I don't think it starts till Saturday anyway. So when it's to start, unless we all get Friday off, if we have it on Thursday, then always gonna work enough. Just checking, okay with me? And that one goes, the, so for us, I, um, already have, um, secured, uh, facilitation. Um, four specific dates on those, so I would need to make sure that they weren't anything like, well, for the board, those are board workshop dates, and so I have already secured the facilitator. And, um, like I said, staff is here, Monday to Friday and Saturday and Sunday, so it doesn't. I don't have a preference, it doesn't matter, I just would want to make sure that the previous actions that the board has taken. Um, that we're able to to change that date, so the board would like me looking into that as an option, and then provide, uh, feedback back to the board if you want.
I went ahead, um, last month and penciled it in on my calendar, and I didn't see any holidays, so. Like, following, like, Friday preceding a holiday or something like that, you would be able to see that. So I don't think we're interferes with much getting away from early from the holiday.
The Martin Luther King Weekend?
Uh?
Martin Luther King Weekend?
Yeah, it is, it, the sort of January date, but again, we still work on Friday, so, and our board study sessions, uh, tend to end about three o'clock.
Yeah, alright.
And so, even if we left at three, that's like super late, which we would, because our students are still in school, our school students are still here on Friday.
Yeah.
So for us, from a staff perspective, we're still here. So whether our meeting is on a Thursday or a Friday, our weekend doesn't, isn't till after, students are dismissed, we'll probably have, uh, athletics on that night and so forth. So really, it is the, it's the privilege of, um, preference of the board, it's worth your staff, and that is no problem. Uh, my only thing is, um, because we have secured facilitation in advance to make sure there isn't going to be conflict, uh, with that.
Well, yeah, that person, if they'd be available on the Thursday, then bring it back, have a talk to the board.
Yeah, can, um, what what were the dates, um, or can you email us the dates?
The, um.
I'll check my calendar.
January fourteenth and May twentieth right now.
May twentieth?
Mm-hmm.
And then Ms. Freeman, is that interesting, move back to the thirteenth and the nineteenth? To move it one day prior?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I I can check in, why, I did, no, first of all, this side. The calendar could be done. Okay?
Yeah, I'm okay, with, um, and Dr. Mitchell needs to find out.
Sure. Be very humble. Sure. So if I understand the direction, um, the board is interested in changing, uh, the January fourteenth date to January thirteenth. The May twentieth date to May nineteenth, and I would like for me to see facilitations available by maybe that one day change. While providing updates to the board. Um, and then if we are going to change the date to previously taken action on the side of, we would bring it back on the agenda to make that change for now.
I just checked, and I'm, I'm okay.
Okay. And I'll give the board some time to look at their calendar as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So.
Sure. No, no, no problem.
So do we?
There was this discussion, right? We asked them. I mean. There's the emotion that's been moved on, correct, and so, but the motion for, sort of, to review and discuss. So there was an opening to review and discuss, and so, and the direction back staff, is what I have shared. Um, and so, I, that there's a vote on maybe that direction.
Okay.
So they, we, was there a need to vote the vote in your direction instead of, uh, setting the date? Okay. Well. Uh, then we can vote directly, we can vote up for the, uh, Dr. Mitchell's direction to the study. Okay, the local, um, Freeman?
Aye.
And this Gonzalez?
Aye.
David Malcolm?
Aye.
Eric Manegas?
Aye.
Erician I motion carries. Right, just to give Dr. Mitchell the, uh, the. Next one is, uh, seven I. The resolution number of A S twenty, twenty-one, fourteen, authorizing the permanent transfer between one. That's a motion and then a second to adopt the resolutions as twenty twenty-one.
I'll move.
Done a move.
I'll second.
Mr. Manegas second? Any question?
This is just routine. This is. This is, uh, this is required for the billion-dollar grant that we received for the S E T program. For no gallus, uh, technology program, for the rural high school auto program. So, the grant requires us to have a fifty percent, uh, match. So we are starting to sign the million dollars as required by the grant, as the state provides a million dollar also for this program.
Any more questions? Okay, Mr. Luke Hobold, Tom Freeman?
Aye.
And this Gonzalez?
Aye.
David Malcolm?
Aye.
Eric Manegas?
Aye.
Erician I motion carries. Next item seven J, resolution number S O twenty twenty-one sixteen, mental health awareness one, May twenty twenty-one. Motion? Second?
I make a motion.
I'll second.
David motion? Ms. Freeman second? Any questions?
I just, I just want to thank the board, Dr. Mitchell, for putting this on the agenda. Um, I think that with the pandemic. Situation with many of our students has changed greatly over the past year, you know, I feel that. We have a primary purpose of educating our students, but we also have a primary purpose of understanding who our students are and what their needs are. If you don't do that, you can't do the education part of it. So it kind of goes hand in hand. So, thank you for putting this on the agenda.
Just mental health is very important, so, uh, people ignored, and, and without and physical, uh, are equally important, I think, more important for the. So, yeah, thi- this is good, good, especially.
Yes, I'd just like to, um, emotional little being healthy, emotional role for your students. It's part of our support, of support, that's very, I'm I'm glad that this is part of that mental health awareness one. In the long term. When they go summer vacation. Definitely, it's fascinating.
Okay, just like Mr. Malcolm, you bring this, uh, up on a regular basis, and I appreciate that you are watching, and for the judge, so, and leaving on the table and having us discuss it, it's different for us, thank you.
More questions? Local vote? Tom Freeman?
Aye.
And this Gonzalez?
Aye.
David Malcolm?
Aye.
Eric Manegas?
Aye.
Erician I motion carries. The next item, seven K, review for policy fifty-one sixteen twenty-one. In the district, opening and enrollment. The item is for review only, education code requires what to review this policy annually. There were no recommended changes from staff. Any questions? Especially. Okay, then we move to the next item, seven L, review the policy sixty-one forty-five extracurricular activities. This item is also for review only, education code requires what to review this on state annually. There are no recommended changes from the staff. Any discussion? Then we move to the next item, is consent charter. Uh, need a motion and then a second to be. All the items in consent accepted as well. The. Local vote? Tom Freeman?
It's rising, move.
Oh, yeah, a little, a little motion.
I'll move.
Done a move.
I'll second.
With Manegas second? The local vote?
Aye.
And, and this Gonzalez?
Aye.
David Malcolm?
Aye.
Eric Manegas?
Aye.
Erician I motion carries. Okay, then we, uh, when the item was put out, the item number eight, five, three. Need a. Motion?
I'll move.
Done a move, and second?
I'll second.
And the second?
Especially, yes.
The reason I told it is, I think that, uh, as everyone knows, that you're pushing counselors in elementary schools, and it sounds wonderful, but I would like more information to be on it.
Perfect, uh, yeah, no problem, we can provide that information, actually, I would like to see if Mary and Kim is available. Uh, this, uh, outreach concern is, uh, been in our district before, I believe, two years, this is our third. Um, and it, uh, it is done through our, uh, new resource center as a service and, uh, to people who are students. So, oh, there's Mary, can you answer that question for us?
Yes, good evening, but before I answer that, I just do want to say, happy day of the teacher, happy National Nurses, School Nurse Day. Because I'm not just an employee, but a proud parent too, my kids have and currently attend Roland, so yay for the, uh, the certificated staff going. Um, so we have been contracting and working with the, uh, outreach concerns since two thousand, uh, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. They support our elementary K six schools two days a week. Um, they have, uh, supervised counseling interns that come into the school sites, and everything was in person, but then, uh, uh, obviously with COVID, we had to pivot. And so all of their services are currently, um, virtual setting. But in the new school year, we're looking to go back to the in-person counseling supports.
Are we having more than two, um, after, I mean, two days a week?
Yes, we would look, we would like to see at least four days a week.
That's what the plan is?
Yes.
And what else, um, did I read something else about there's, uh, outside counseling available too?
So for our students who are at the elementary schools who utilize outreach concern, they do provide, uh, parent supports, parent workshops, um, in teacher training services. They also have a twenty-four hour crisis hotline that's available only to the schools who contract them, contract with them, and that's three hundred sixty-five days a year. So that's a really big asset that all of our families can have access to, should they ever need that.
Thank you, Mary, how wonderful, sounds terrific.
David?
Um, can you define counselor? Um, because there's so many different ways counselors are being defined in education.
Right, right.
Or what type of counselors?
So these are all counseling interns, and they are supervised by their regional field supervisors, so they check with them, um, all the time. Um, they come in, they actually come visit at the sites, and so if there was anything that would become maybe a really big issue. And so if there was anything that would become maybe a really big issue, then that regional field supervisor would step in immediately to assist.
Are these social and emotional counselors and versus the counselors that we have like at high school that are more college preparation counselors?
Correct, correct, because this is for our elementary students.
Again, I don't know if you were on earlier, um, oh, Miss um Urbia, Urban, Urban, Amy Urban. Uh, had a comment about this. Um, I don't know if you heard it, but she felt that um having different interns interacting with the students is not as good as having a permanent. Employee that we would hire interacting. Do you have any concerns about these being interns that change from year to year?
Uh, I don't have any concerns. Uh, we have been working with interns, uh, just, you know, these past three years. We've also been working with uh interns with uh who are obtaining their MSWs with their licensed clinical social workers. So and that's, I know that's a different capacity, but nonetheless interns. And so far, um, it's been very positive. I haven't had or know of any issues coming from these interns.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? Um.
Okay. Okay, maybe you will.
Okay, so um ready for local vote, um Freeman?
Hi.
Anderson Gonzalez?
Hi.
David. David Malcolm, hi. Eric Manegas, all right, Eric Chen, I, which is Harry. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's move to conference session. The board will hold a public hearing to receive comments on local control and the potential of that. For twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year at the regular board meeting on May twenty seventh, twenty twenty. Six P M. The proposed help act will be available for public view. Should members of the public wish to view to review the. If prior to the public hearing, if you wish to do so, please contact Education Service Department. At Denver, uh, many current as to the schools that are. The next item is. What education will hold a public hearing to receive a comment on the proposed twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Ruling unified specific history budget at the regular board meeting on May twenty seventh, twenty twenty. At six P M. The proposed budget will be available for public viewing. Should members of the public wish to review the budget prior to the public hearing? If you wish to do so, please contact the council department and. Is correct as London schools are all. Information on how to participate in public hearing will be posted on the website at W W W London schools dot org. No later than seventy-two hours prior to the meetings. Um, which is the year incorrect.
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
Thank you, Paulie.
Correct. Uh, which it is for the budget for the time twenty one, twenty two. You're correct, it's the board meeting on May twenty seventh, twenty twenty one.
Okay, yeah, both items, they have been correct. Uh, here and both are twenty twenty one.
Correct, thank you.
With this, more members. Comments, so start from. Thomas.
Oh, it's so good to know that students are back in person at our school. After the first day of school, a T K student said to this, I can hardly wait to come again. Thank you to everyone for all their hard work for making this possible and your continued hard work for maybe the interventions for in-person. The floor for winning our school successful. Um, also, um, Amy Orion and I spoke today and she said that there were, anytime there was an issue, it was addressed right away. Someone to thank Allison, the department for getting that great compliment. Congratulations to Nogales High School senior Nestor Mandu Jono. Who was named Edison International Scholar and received a forty thousand fellowship for. For our career in STEM. Congratulations to Gianna and Bermuda for receiving the National Best Communities Award for music. Education, only ten schools in California were given this award. Jennifer Chorjea was far as I could have evidenced. Congratulations to Roland High School for being named two thousand twenty one California Distinguished School again. What an honor. Also for winning the grand finale tournament of the City of L.A. STEM tournament. Also to Roland High School Academic Tech of Blonde team for placing twentieth out of seventy-eight schools at the Academic Tech of Blonde. Day Championship. Also for their add- additive manufacturing teams, three D printing for winning silver. At the California Skills U F A fifty-four State Leadership and Skill Conference. For many awards, which showed all the hard work paid off by staff and students. With the Roland High School, very impressive. Wonderful presentation by Sheldon this evening and thank you Allison team again for a wonderful presentation. The win was looking at the national one. Some of the events that I attended since the round board meeting are a surprise, a surprise business to Roland Unified School District's employees of the year. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell and team for making this possible. What a wonderful thing to do. Congratulations to Ashley McGrath from Roland Elementary for a regular banquet from. Santana and anonymously from district office. Also, congratulations to all the employees of the year. What a great honor. The Mount Back Force meeting, a interest of all the council members and board members, everyone had an opportunity to speak. Adult education open house presentations were outstanding. The teacher made a video of what their class was about and they were all very informative, great job. The Ivy solo exhibitions two thousand twenty one were great. It was wonderful as Roland High School students explained their art via Zoom. So much great talent. The City of West Covina Council recognized sixty-five Nogales High School students for achieving a four point O this past fall. Seven students came to the meeting to receive their certificate in person, which was very special. Eric Manegas and Laura Rebus represented our U S team. Thank you for being there. Great job. Walnut Cities two thousand twenty one mayor's prayer breakfast, a morning of praise and worship. So best part was the end when Roland High School orchestra performed. They sounded so fabulous. The textbook review was very informative. These textbooks will be voted on next board meeting, so I will talk about them then. Although I just wanted to say thank you to Jane Ritchie and uh from Nogales High School and Rocky Stella from Roland High School. As well as Rocky for taking the time to present these books. In the consent items, we approved many items. I just want to mention um the one about. Uh, I think we discussed that one already. Um, consent item was the contract agreement between the outreach concern. And then we talked about the uh counseling and the contract agreements between the Roland Unified School District and Abbott College Reading and Systems Services. Abbott is a great program. Its mission is to close the achievement gap by preparing all students for college-ready and perfect. Abbott operates with one guiding principle, hold students accountable to the highest standards, provide academic and social support. And they will rise to the challenge. I am thrilled that we have Abbott and Hollingworth, Oswald, Alvarado, Gianna, Nogales High School, Roland High School. Back behind things over two hour, in-person high school graduation as well as the adult education drive through graduation. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. David?
Oh.
All right. I've rewritten this thing about five times during the meeting, cause I don't want to be repetitive of what I said or heard during the meeting. So I'll try to make it a lot shorter. Um, congratulations to all the students that were recognized tonight. And a big uh thank you to principals Mitch Brunyan and Carlos Ocho, Ochoa. Um, for creating environment in their schools that allow these students to um excel in these after-school programs. Um, I also want to thank um Miss Bates uh for the creative virtual art exhibition that um Miss Freeman was talking about. Two featured Ivy students, Katie and Barton were terrific. Um. They the art that they presented was very interesting. The influence of the pandemic on the art was very interesting. And we had an in-depth conversation afterwards that was very informative for me. The students explained their work and how they use their art to express their emotional feelings about their pandemic experiences. Um, tonight we passed the resolution for mental health, um. Additional resources for mental health services such as um. Item consent item eight B five, the contract between Roland Unified School District and Outreach Concern Incorporated. Um, more than ever, emotional social supports are needed in our schools. This was very evident um in the Ivy art presentation. And then the other day I participated in the C T E exit interviews. And um in the exit interviews, one student uh expressed uh hurt feelings about. Her grade going down during the past year and how she disappointed her family as well as herself. And another student wasn't able to attend because that morning their family was being infected. And she was emotionally a bit upset to talk to a panel about her C T E experience. So it just shows you how it's hitting our students in many different ways. This is also teacher appreciation, man. What better time to celebrate teacher appreciation and the return of students and teachers to the classroom? I'd like to share a note on social media that one of our parents posted. My daughter said she that, and she referring to her teacher, my daughter says that you are the best teacher she ever had. And she's so happy she finally got to meet you in person and her little rascal classmates. Next school year will be more exciting. Can't wait. Happy Teachers Appreciation Week to all these amazing teachers. I love them. One of many of them posted. Um, there was one note that was really cute, um, Roland, I'll mention from um Ashley McGrath's um students. And um, actually she was featured on Channel Four News last night. And one student says, um, I can't wait till the pandemic's over, cause I want to hug my teacher. That's so cute. Um, I must also extend a big appreciation to our classified employees. Who created a safe environment for our teachers and students to enable them to return to the classroom. Many of them worked long hours during this past year and as well as the um nutritional services who provided meals to our students the past year. And like everybody else recognized, the school nurses that were recognized also. Uh, this past um, this past week. Congratulations to John A. Roland High School for being named covering to take distinguished school award again. Along with extensive views and presentations, the students are important part of that process. So congratulations to the students as well, again to the administration of Roland High. And then as I mentioned, I participated in exit interviews of the C T E program. That is one excellent program. Um, if you if if you want to see students that might not continue on to college. That um will be looking for a job. This program really presents, um, you know, um, helps them to develop um their resume. Um, how to interview, what to say during an interview. We as judges then critique them on what they're saying. And some of them are just excellent uh presenters and answered the questions very well. And um. One of the questions I asked, one of them was what what was your biggest accomplishment in C T E? And what was your biggest failure and what did you learn from that failure? And I tell you, they were so good at answering that question. It was just great. They took their failure and turned it around and made it a positive, how they improved as a result of it. And this is great, I'm watching them. And finally, I also attended the um Walnut Mayor's prayer process of the media prayer. It was really a nice event. It was actually nicer virtually than it is in person. Um. It it was inclusive. It had all the different religions there. And that was really made it meaningful. Um, but despite all the different um religions that were uh present, they all had a core. Um, message message that they're um giving out. And that is that we need to be a more compassionate world and kind to each other. And they all mentioned that indirectly or directly, regardless of their faith. And I I was thinking, God, if if we just all, if we just all would practice that, what a better world we found. So that's it for me. Thank you. Anderson?
Good evening. Um, I also attended the National Day of Prayer um with the. The city uh city of Roland Council. And I really appreciated um and want to congratulate John Chen for a beautiful, beautiful rendition of art. Roland High School Orchestra. I was really touched. And of course, all the different religion in there. Who had given the same uh feedbacking on Mr. Malcolm's um. That we do need to be compassionate, kind. And that is the world we're living now, within normalcy that we have. And on that note, when I walk, because I close to Nogales High Schools. And I saw the school bus. I thought to myself, wow, I'm getting back to normal. And it just melts my heart. Because I know that the students will be back soon sooner than later. And having the kids there in the school bus and knowing that they're going to learn in person. They're going to be able to meet their friends, their teachers. And with the consent of the parents who let them go to school for the support. It just melts my heart and I know we are moving forward. It is a good motion to see that in our daily lives um in this time. Uh, I'd like to congratulate Roland High School. Of course, my gosh, you have three. Um, recognition tonight. E-sports team academic. The Catholic three D printing, Mr. Brunyer, you have outlined yourself as all of your students and staff. Being a California distinguished school. That is really something. Um, in my book. Um, Gianna Intermediate School recognizing you as ten uh ten. Schools in America and only eight in the list to be recognized and have this award. Um, and also I would like to thank the city of West Covina. Uh, for recognizing the students at Nogales High School with the eight four point O. I had the. Pleasure to meet them on not an official business, but um we've been cutting ceremony for this one. And I was able to meet all the dignitaries of the city of West Covina and they're saying hello to you, Mr. Manegas. Um, but just the relationship of the community around us. Makes me proud to be part of the Roland Unified School District. Because they really think very highly of us. Not just the boards, but the administration, cabinet, the teachers, of course, the teachers, teacher recognition. This month is very important for education. We have teachers to thank, nurses to thank, classified employees to thank. My goodness, this education. We are in this business because we mean well for the students that we we serve, for the community that we serve. And for the parents who know that we take care of their students when they're in the school, when they're in our care. And I just would like to thank just the it. My eyes just want to cry because when I walk, when I saw and driving by Nogales High School in some of the schools. They're crossing the street and the tea and the students are just smiling. And they're having fun, laughing, sharing stories with their friends. I think we're getting there. We're gonna get back to normal. And thank you for this this board that we have for doing that um portion of um opening and support on April twenty sixth. And I'm glad to be part of that. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you, Anderson. Mr. Manegas.
Thank you. Um, as you, I always want to acknowledge our student presenter, Spine, so uh Justice Helen and Nicholas Shala. You, I believe you're sixth grade. What an amazing coming into the board, doing it live, real time. Um, that's that's quite a feat. I appreciate you. Oh, and Daniel Joseph and Mel, your your high school updates are always appreciated. I look forward to hearing your updates next year. Um. One of the things I am grateful, I didn't have to follow this Freeman um on her visits. She always has a list of visits, so um, but I did go right after you. So I do want to highlight some of the visits I had uh since our last board meeting. Uh, I attended the career today and I presented to partners and sixth graders uh my STEM career. And it reminded me of when I was that age and and presenting and someone presenting to me and getting insight of our STEM career, so. So, um, those, that's a great program. Getting kids excited, long-term on, on various careers, not just STEM. Um, I did attend the I V art promarch show. What passion these students had and amazing work. I've worked with professional creatives most of my career and it was par right on there. They did an amazing job. Um, I also shared with the seniors that were there, I have a hard time drawing stick figures, so I really, but I do appreciate our, they do a great job. Um, I attended the uh, Adult Education Open House and the one particular there and the presentation that was, was fabulous. Um, also the Rowan Choir Competition, uh, where they did very well, uh, both in the youth competition and there was a solo in there. And then getting back to a sense of normalcy of being at the West Covina City Council. Um, and standing there with the kids getting recognized, the Nogales High School kid that had a seven, nine, ten graders. That um, received a four point O, being in person was, was really, really nice. I mean, that's that, that sense of normalcy. And I, and I, I lived right in Nogales as well, so um, seeing the school bus there and the kids, um, the fields are, are being used. There's kids out there practicing, um, seeing the parents or spectators along Nogales that can't be there, but they're gonna be standing on the side on the street looking in. Um, we're getting closer and so with that, I, I'm really excited that we're moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vanegas. Um, event of May, I can thank all the nurses, especially uh, for the past few years, for the magic and damage. They are heroes. And we rely on the nurses, we save our life, everyone we shot, we're still. So we can thank the nurses, students, everyone. Uh, okay. Really, really scared. And teachers are heroes too. Month of May, yes, Teacher Appreciation, we, we afford the Teacher Appreciation Day. Every time thinking about doing my giant life journey, uh, thinking about the teacher who inspired me and taught me. And how I appreciate. Thank you. Yeah. And we see the teachers, what they do. Each of the kids, they are creating so many. Next generation leaders, next generation. Uh, it will be, we, so much of Christmas celebration. We, we, but the base is very, very, um, significant to, to me. And. Tonight we, um, we recognize the achievement of Gianna, Intermediate School. And the, the music award, NOM, and I Googled NOM because I think this is the first time we had that award. NOM is a, a big organization and associations of uh, national appreciation of uh, music merchants. And the NOM had uh, so many different activities. Um, uh, in, in music industry and there's NOM Foundation. Then a lot of uh, uh, of work to inspire the case of music is one of them. So I'm very happy, um, Gianna won the award. I was very, um, excited. So I, I will see you keep doing that and uh, and then, and then, and then promoting music. Um. Now, a few days ago, we have a food review for the, for the food, food kind of yard. And one of the book they have presented is the, uh, food of the world. And during, at the end of the, the review, I mentioned, I appreciate the. Food in different part of the world and all related and, and I realized food is the. It is a tool to, to connecting the people in the world because in kind of the food in Asia, they originate from Europe. It's a long, have a thousand years. They find including, and European people is taking originally from, from, from Asia. Middle East. So when you talk about food, there's no enemy, everybody eat. Music is the same, same thing. Music bring connecting people together. And um, I, I enjoy the, the soup, soup roll and supper by you know, hot. And the idea is to connect people. Music is universal and, 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 and if you like music. And when you know what, because music is connecting everyone. So mix some, um, to add give us the, the idea. Um, this content is nice. Um, and then. Teach the kids. Music, so we glad to have music for all. That's, that's, that's good. And, and uh, Rowan High School at the. Uh, it is for, for what it's given, what the city, city. STEM and that's also a very, um. The, that's largest celebration of science, technology, engineering and math. Um, so that, the, is it the first time we will next, to the, so, so this, this is very, very, very good. And um, and another, uh, academic catalog team and we did great on that. Um, and the Northern High School is the star brand. Uh, the real word plus the California distinguished school for, for next few years. So, and we're dedicated to Gianna and Rowan High School. And um, we, we approved the resolution for mental health. That remind me, uh, we just received a, a piece of information I had to share with everybody. As I'm the, uh, board representative, representing, you want to. To receive image, information from Cal S S D. And I'd like to share the, uh, the, uh. A very, very uh, ambitious, ambitious plan by the government, Nixon, he knows history. Um. And uh, we got this from Cal S S D, so I had to, to share, share with the, uh, the board. On May twelve yesterday, the governor, Governor Nielsen announced a major investment on the public schools. They are under twenty billion dollars investment to, to the next few years. Um, there, for, for that five years. The, uh, the number one is create a universal T K by twenty twenty four. The two point seven billion dollars to, to create a T K as the grade level. Be a grade level, so, uh, twenty twenty from, from, the, the, in that from, K is eating with everybody. And then number two is a community school, you're creating service-based community school. That's a spend for the general cost of two hundred sixty five billion dollars grant for a community school. And then number three is wellness and mental health, brain health. And mental health get the serious above issue. Uh, mental health, brain health for four billion dollars for screening real treatment from birth to age twenty five. Most transnational commitment, universal screening and access to health care. And that's a very rich and vicious for, oh, for mental health, four billion dollars, by the way. And, and uh, the fourth item is before and after school and summer program. It will spend one billion dollars for this year in total commitment, five billion dollars. For after school and before after school and summer program for all the kids. And number five, the, the, you, the, when the, okay, three point three billion dollars for teacher recruitment. Training invested in, in the third area, the teachers. And the number six is one point one billion dollars to improve staff to student ratio. At schools serving highest concentration of vulnerable students, very, very precious. And two point six million, billion dollars commitment to accelerate learning and a high dosage tutoring. And the eighth item is child saving account, you're gonna put everybody at five hundred dollars. Or using the general fund dollar for three point seven million child savings account for low-income children. Two billion dollars to create these accounts and opportunity for the families, for their children to have college or trade school. So, so this is very interesting, um, and, uh, and, but this is just for sharing with the board. And, 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 and the, and they can be discussed and realized. So I'd like to, to, to catch up on how it's called, but at least it's a very good proposal. Glad to see that, and work. Um, thank you much and that's all of my reports. Um, then we need to, um. Move to close session. We are finishing the close session, uh, business before we. Right, right, okay.
Thank you. And we're gonna adjourn to close session, Emma?
Big man, great.
Right. Adjourning to close session, Kat?
Uh, adjourned close session, eight twenty five.
Perfect, thank you. Sorry.